Call the meeting door of the whole call please Michelle.
Evan.
Here.
Kellidonia.
Here.
Canisius.
Here.
Geneseo.
Here.
Groveland.
Here.
Lester.
Here.
Lima.
Here.
Livonia.
Here.
Mount Morris.
Here.
North Enzo.
Here.
Nande.
Here.
Ashen.
Here.
Portage.
Here.
Sparta.
Here.
Springwater.
Here.
West Sparta.
Here.
York.
Here. Like to ask your supervisor Gerald Dunning to read some part of the resolution.
The Latin Constitution, the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the minutes of our last regular meeting, January 22nd. For your consideration, does anyone have any changes that wish to provide us with at this time? Hearing none, I look for a motion in a second, please. Mr. Park. Thank you, all those in favor.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? None, they're carried. Some communications, please Michelle.
Acknowledgment letter regarding resolution number 2025-28 and 2025-29 from NISAC Executive Director Stephen Aquario. Thank you note from Christine Galassano and a thank you note from Bill Gole.
Thank you, abstracted claims next.
Mr. Chairman, I move this abstracted claims and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Naif. Are there any concerns or questions on this abstracted claims? Hearing none, we roll please Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Kellidonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Enzo.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Ayes 54 adopted.
We have several resolutions to consider on the Florida agenda.
Appointing a member to the Livingston County Board of Health, Deanna Lyons, M.D. Appointing Environmental Management Council Chairperson, Alexander Pierce. Appointing members to the Livingston County Planning Board, April Mack and John Younger. Appointing members to the Livingston County Soil and Water Conservation District Board of Directors, John Maxwell. Approving the 2025 New York State Legislative Agenda. Adopting the Livingston County Social Media Policy. Adapting revisions to the Livingston County Purchasing Policy. Adapting revisions to Livingston County Purchasing Card Policy. Adapting revisions to the Livingston County Travel Policy.
Thank you, is there any discussion on these resolutions? Hearing none, I look for a motion in a second, but you are both called out.
Motion, Mr. Park.
Second question. Thank you, all those in favor.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, I will roll on these resolutions, please Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Kellidonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Enzo.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Ayes 54 adopted.
We have several resolutions filed that we're going to require a separate review.
Mrs. Walker, authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for Livingston County Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation, Fusion Medical Staffing LLC and United Healthcare Veterans Affairs Community Care Networks.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any concern on this resolution? Hearing none, we roll please Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Kellidonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Enzo.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Ayes 54 adopted. Authorizing a professional services contract for the provision of qualified professional healthcare training and consulting services, Beacon Solutions Group.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Are there any concerns on this resolution? Hearing none, we roll please Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Kellidonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Enzo.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Ayes 54 adopted. Establishing the Livingston County Mental Health Clinic Rate Schedule effective January 1st, 2025.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Are there any questions or concerns on this rate schedule? Hearing none, we roll please Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Kellidonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Enzo.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Ayes 54 adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Department of Social Services, Catholic Charities Stubein Livingston and Industrial Medicine Associates.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Are there any concerns on either of these contracts? Hearing none, we roll please Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Kellidonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Enzo.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Ayes 54 adopted. Authorizing the Commissioner of Social Services to sign the following contracts, Livingston County Attorney, Livingston County Information and Technology Services and Livingston County Sheriff's Office.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Are there any concerns on any of these contracts? Hearing none, we roll please Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Kellidonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Enzo.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Ayes 54 adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Office for the Aging, Home and Healthcare Services Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Are there any questions on this contract? Hearing none, we roll please Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Kellidonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Enzo.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Ayes 54 adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Office for Workforce Development Youth Bureau, Forest Hill Catering and Vera Realty Doing Businesses Willow Creek Management.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Are there any concerns on any of these contracts? Hearing none, we roll please Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Kellidonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Enzo.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Ayes 54 adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Office for Workforce Development, Genesee Finger Lakes Regional Planning Council.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Are there any questions on this resolution? Hearing none, we roll please Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Kellidonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Enzo.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Ayes 54 adopted. Mr. Demming, authorization to submit grant applications to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation's Municipal Zero-Emission Vehicle Infrastructure Grants Program.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution? Hearing none, we roll please Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Kellidonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland. Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Enzo.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Ayes 54 adopted. Amending the Livingston County Traffic Diversion Program.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution? Hearing none, we roll please Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Kellidonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Enzo.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Ayes 54 adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County District Attorney's Office, Advent Financial Systems LLC.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any questions or concerns on this contract? Hearing none, we roll please Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Kellidonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Enzo.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Ayes 54 adopted. Authorizing a professional services contract for the engineering, design, right-of-way and construction support phases of a bridge, New York Bridge Replacement Project. Cheese Factory Road over Keshqua Creek, Town of Portage, Pin Number Four, BNY78 CNS Companies.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution? Hearing none, we roll please Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Kellidonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Enzo.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Ayes 54 adopted. Amending Resolution Numbers 2020-58 and 2020-59, authorizing contracts with local municipalities and the New York State Department of Transportation for snow and ice control on state roads.
Mr. Chairman, this resolution did not go through committee but has been signed by all committees that was present. Also, Jason is here and would like to speak to it at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Aye, Jason.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
So with this, I received a call yesterday from our state liaison in Lakeville and the state's requesting that we do amend, basically make a new resolution for this contract. There was a few things that they wanted removed, a few things they wanted added. And with that, they're saying that until they receive this resolution and it's okayed through the OSC at the state, they are withholding funds for reimbursement for state snow and ice. So, all the stuff that you do for the state as far as the plowing and all that, we are not getting reimbursed for until this is okayed and gone through the OSC department. I spoke with a lady from the state this morning and Elaine and I both did, were on the call. She told me that it had three departments to go through, the OSC being the last. It should be two days roughly per department. And so I kind of said to her, I said, "Well, so you know, if there was a 10-day, if we allotted 10 days and we can expect our payment, you know, at that time." She obviously couldn't answer to that. I also had said to her, you know, I think that regardless of this resolution being that we signed this and this was all done months ago, they've been sitting on this for quite some time and now decided to do this, but that we should at least be reimbursed for the work that you've all done up to this point. Because right now, the money that you're receiving comes out of my highway budget and then the state is to reimburse me, which obviously I'm not seeing that. So I just wanted you all to be aware of where we're at with that. I spoke with the chairman this morning on the phone. Shannon was nice enough to draw up this, the new resolution. You know, hopefully it works with them and they're, you know, good with it. But we had also spoken about maybe having Shannon draft a letter as well saying that they have 10 business days or something to that effect, whatever everybody obviously thinks is to saying, you know, we were looking for our reimbursement after that time, 10 days after, you know, their receipt of this resolution. The other thing that she had mentioned, the lady that I spoke to from the state this morning, was that there's 537,914 dollars and 80 cents left in our account from last year. And I said, "Well, why can't you just send that to me?" And she says, "Well, I've been advised not to." So, I'm like, "Okay." The other statement that I made to her was, "Okay, we don't get paid, your roads don't get plowed." I don't know where all you stand on that, but if this comes down to it, you know, that's my suggestion, is that we just say, "Figure it out then." They're not paying us, so I don't think there's anything they can do to us. We're not being paid for the service, so...
All right, Mr. Demming. That was my question, how she feel about taking care of the roads themselves?
And they don't want to hear it. I mean, I talked to Mike Hines yesterday and said the same thing to him. I said, you know, I said, "We'll just stop our operations," you know. Well, no, no, I don't think that's what she meant. Well, what did she mean? I mean, she said she's withholding the funds. I mean, to me, that means she's not paying us.
I agree.
So...
Shannon, is there anything substantial change?
No, honestly, they're just like the fact that our underlying base resolution is pre-planned approval of the odd magic rules, not the private stuff. They're all...
So I don't have any problem with the resolution today, of course, but I don't like the, I just, I don't like the way Albany does business and this is classic.
Mr. Prazlazjola, about it.
Mr. Frazio, about that, if, yeah. Shannon, can you draft up something to when we send this resolution that says that we'll be looking for money in 10 days? I mean, I don't know if I'm doing any good, but at least it's there in the mix. It always feel better that we can say, hey, look, we want our money in 10 days. And to Jason's point, they got the money, he's paid us. Right? Just pay us.
Yeah.
What's their drop dead date? Because as far as I'm concerned, if they're not paying, then they're not getting their roads blocked.
We have established one. We, we just talked about, we'd like the money in 10 days, but we, I guess it depends how firm you would like us to.
Yeah, I mean, I, like I say, I, she, she told me two days roughly, which we all know that's not happening. I mean, it'll be, it'll be months. I mean, I, she's just saying that, but. I would say, giving that, you know, I mean, you're talking six days, if you do the math, and 10, 10 business days, and we, we want to see our money, or else find somebody to plow your roads.
It should be included in the letter from Shannon.
No, no, that's, that's, yeah, definitely. Yep.
Shannon, what does the contract say as far as us notifying them we're not going to? We're not a part of it, is there?
There's probably a specific piece in that that shows the funding. So we can check down there, we can pay us. The only business account we will have is through the contract, the account that involves you. So we need to pay you because we're not receiving money, and we don't need to contract to you. So obviously, that's why we'll continue to pay you as the, as the, as the problem. So there's really no danger here to us. So stay lucky.
So I think I, I would suggest that we add to that 10-day stamp that will stop plowing roads in 10 days. Notify the county.
Is there, I, we, we might want to look at that, because I think there's a 30-day notice period.
For termination.
For termination.
Right, we're not terminated, and then I know we're going to breach and we're going to. I just, yeah, keep in mind, although there are some storms that are coming up, and sure it's not paying care of the half of the roadway, because we're not leaving out what's taken care of. I'm sure we're going to get caught, caught in that.
We'll get the repercussions for that, yeah, but.
I don't, I don't think my town is going to stop plowing roads for that very reason, but to say it is a different thing. You know, to play hardball, hardball.
I think that'll definitely gain their attention, because like I say, everybody that I've talked to so far is like, oh, hold on, you know, that's not. That's not what we want, but again, I mean, I don't really intend to continue to fund the state through my budget. Because I can't get my own work done. So.
Yeah, I would just concur with the thoughts expressed here today, and, you know, I'm just concerned that the state would give us an ultimatum on something so simple as this language that they'd like to have in there. But it's got to be, in my mind, something else undermines them that they're, they're giving us an ultimatum, but I don't mind returning the ultimatum to them to, to get funds paid within 10 days, like, you know, like was discussed.
Like I said, my conspiracy is that they don't have the money in that account, that it got moved someplace else. And this is the.
And this is the repercussions.
Well, well, we'll just hang out here and kind of string this along until we can figure out how to, how to fund that.
Do you understand, are they doing this to other counties too?
What's that? Oh, yeah, no, it's, it's across the board. Yep, yep, it's not just us, it's across the board. So there's, there's only, there's only one other county that does it the same that we do, is Time Material, and that we, we do all the clerical work behind it. The rest of them are done through the towns in, in the counties themselves. Yep.
Jason's going to talk about the salt, but before we do that, is there any other discussion on the state snow ice?
Well, do we have to, board member for each township have to sign the contract, or is it going to just go through the county?
This would be between the county and the state. We already, we all did our individual agreements, between the county and the county. And this is going to be over providing the road.
Yes.
Between the county and the state.
To be fair, it isn't really united, not that the county and the state was going, only we've decided, they have not.
They have not, right. Which we, yeah, that's the other thing we've been waiting for, for. I don't know how many months so far, yeah.
Jason, I quick watched it, but noticing, and if even, I'll take a fourth. Around 3 o'clock, and on that day, there's a state, a snow block going from Lakeville, and then turn around and view those. So who was, who was getting reimbursed, or who's really maintaining that section of the road at 15?
State of New York.
Is the state of New York doing it?
Albany doesn't do any work for the state.
Oh, yeah, oh, so that's why, okay. I wanted to write, I wasn't able to chart what we got to see. And that's the only roads that they're doing in the county, is that section.
Yeah, I, to be honest, I, I don't keep track totally of what you guys do, how many miles of rural beach.
We do, we do state, I know.
But. Yeah, because Mount Morris gave that up, yeah.
That's all state too? Yeah, I, I just curious, I wonder, I, I don't see it. What's, I don't want to see.
60, 70.
60, so probably nothing. I don't know, the newspaper. Don't believe it.
So any further discussion on state snow ice, we have a direction forward that was on a pursuit of this thing, like Jason, you have a few things on the salt.
Yeah, so just real quick, also in my conversations yesterday, I talked to both Joe and Joe Junior, Bucy, and Phil Saunders as far as the salt, the shortage, and all that. We've got some stuff worked out to where as if you are getting super low and not getting your deliveries, contact me, and I can talk to Joe, and we'll get that taken care of. I'm not going to say you're going to be totally fulfilled, you know, if you ordered 800 ton, you're probably not getting 800 ton. But they will give you enough to where we can sustain and get through. If you have 800 ton, or, you know, a decent amount, you're probably not going to see anything other than you'll stay on the regular delivery that they have, you know, process that they have for your orders. But he did say yesterday that, you know, if we were in big trouble, some of us, that if I just let them know, they'll, they'll get it out to us. So if anybody is getting down, or you're real low, or whatever, just get with me after the meeting, and we'll go from there and get some stuff in.
Jason, I thank you for, did, we got a little bit too, because we have had some stressful, um, difficulty. I can't wait to put it in, I know it's been a while, so I want to thank you, because we were one of us, so thank you.
No, that's fine, that's what we're here for, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep. All right, thank you.
If there's no other further discussion on the state, I will call over that, this, this contract, and trying to, uh, universal, the state of New York.
Evan?
Hi.
Hilotonia?
Hi.
Canisius?
Hi.
Geneseo?
Hi.
Groveland? Lester? Lima?
Hi.
Livonia? Mount Morris? North Dansville? Nande?
Hi.
Ashen?
Hi.
Portage?
Hi.
Sparta?
Hi.
Springwater?
Hi.
Westferta?
Hi.
York. Eyes 50, 54, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following memorandum of understanding for the Livingston County Office of Emergency Management, New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution, and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Deming. Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution?
Evan?
Hi.
Hilotonia?
Hi.
Canisius?
Hi.
Geneseo?
Hi.
Groveland?
Hi.
Lester?
Hi.
Lima?
Hi.
Livonia? Mount Morris? North Dansville?
Hi.
Nande?
Hi.
Ashen?
Hi.
Portage?
Hi.
Sparta?
Hi.
Springwater?
Hi.
Westferta?
Hi.
York. Eyes 54, 50, sorry, 50, 54, adopted. Approving the official undertaking of public employees fidelity blanket bond for Genesee Fringelait's Regional Planning Council.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution, and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Deming. Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution?
Evan?
Hi.
Canisius?
Hi.
Geneseo? Groveland?
Hi.
Lester?
Hi.
Lima?
Hi.
Livonia? Mount Morris?
Hi.
North Dansville?
Hi.
Nande?
Hi.
Ashen? Portage?
Hi.
Sparta?
Hi.
Springwater? Westferta?
Hi.
York. Eyes 50, 54, adopted. Resolutions supporting the possible submission of applications to the New York State Farm Land Protection Implementation Grants Program. Loggett Brother Farm, Donan Farms, Fraser Farm, Graywood Farm, Hartford Resources LLC, Howlett Farm, Joe Glenn Farm, M2K Farms, Kraken Farm, Roseac Farms, Mount Pockets Farm, Old Fort Farm, Peronell, Gardo, Crest, and Ernest Gates and Sons, and Tri Acres Farm.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution, and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Deming. Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution?
Evan?
Hi.
Hilotonia? Canisius?
Hi.
Geneseo?
Hi.
Groveland?
Hi.
Lester?
Hi.
Lima?
Hi.
Livonia? Mount Morris?
Hi.
North Dansville?
Hi.
Nande?
Hi.
Ashen?
Hi.
Portage?
Hi.
Sparta?
Hi.
Springwater? Westferta?
Hi.
York. Eyes 50, 54, adopted. Amending a portion of resolution number 2024-445, Hunt Engineers Architects Landscapers and Landscape Architects EPC.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution, and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Deming. Any questions or concerns on this resolution?
Evan?
Hi.
Hilotonia? Canisius?
Hi.
Geneseo?
Hi.
Groveland?
Hi.
Lester?
Hi.
Lima?
Hi.
Livonia? Mount Morris? North Dansville?
Hi.
Nande?
Hi.
Ashen? Portage?
Hi.
Sparta?
Hi.
Springwater?
Hi.
Westferta?
Hi.
York. Eyes 50, 54, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Planning Department, CC Environment and Planning, and Upstate Freshwater Institute.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution, and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Deming. Are there any questions or concerns on any of these two contracts?
Evan?
Hi.
Hilotonia?
Hi.
Canisius?
Hi.
Geneseo?
Hi.
Groveland? Lester?
Hi.
Lima?
Hi.
Livonia? Mount Morris? North Dansville?
Hi.
Nande?
Hi.
Ashen?
Hi.
Portage?
Hi.
Sparta?
Hi.
Springwater? Westferta?
Hi.
York.
Hi.
Eyes 50, 54, adopted. A warding bid for the Livingston County Transportation Services, Arc Flow, First Choice Ride Services, Medical Motor Service of Rochester and Monroe County, and Quality Transportation Group Eight.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution, and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Deming. Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution? There are none, I will please yourself.
Evan?
Hi.
Hilotonia? Canisius? Geneseo?
Hi.
Groveland? Lester?
Hi.
Lima?
Hi.
Livonia? Mount Morris? North Dansville?
Hi.
Nande?
Hi.
Ashen? Portage?
Hi.
Sparta?
Hi.
Springwater?
Hi.
Westferta?
Hi.
York. Eyes 50, 54, adopted. Authorizing the creation of a special committee to make recommendations to the Livingston County Board of Supervisors for broadband infrastructure development in Livingston County.
Chairman, I move this resolution, and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Deming. Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution?
Evan?
Hi.
Hilotonia?
Hi.
Canisius?
Hi.
Geneseo?
Hi.
Groveland?
Hi.
Lester?
Hi.
Lima?
Hi.
Livonia? Mount Morris?
Hi.
North Dansville?
Hi.
Nande?
Hi.
Ashen?
Hi.
Portage?
Hi.
Sparta?
Hi.
Springwater? Westferta?
Hi.
York. Eyes 50, 54, adopted. Amending resolution number 2025-22, Celebrite Eight.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution, and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Deming. Are there any concerns on this resolution?
Evan?
Hi.
Hilotonia?
Hi.
Canisius?
Hi.
Geneseo? Groveland?
Hi.
Lester?
Hi.
Lima?
Hi.
Livonia? Mount Morris? North Dansville?
Hi.
Nande?
Hi.
Ashen? Portage?
Hi.
Sparta?
Hi.
Springwater? Westferta?
Hi.
York.
Hi.
Eyes 50, 54, adopted. Mr. Knapp, amending the 2025 Livingston County Budget, Central Services, there are 18, Department of Health and Highway.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution, and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Are there any concerns on this resolution?
Evan?
Hi.
Hilotonia?
Hi.
Canisius?
Hi.
Geneseo?
Hi.
Groveland?
Hi.
Lester?
Hi.
Lima?
Hi.
Livonia?
Right.
Mount Morris?
Hi.
North Dansville?
Hi.
Nande?
Hi.
Ashen?
Hi.
Portage?
Hi.
Sparta?
Hi.
Springwater?
Hi.
Westferta?
Hi.
York. Eyes 50, 54, adopted. Authorizing transfer of funds, Office for the Aging, there are two.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution, and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Are there any questions or concerns on these two chapters?
Evan?
Hi.
Hilotonia?
Hi.
Canisius?
Hi.
Geneseo?
Hi.
Groveland? Lester?
Hi.
Lima?
Hi.
Livonia?
Right.
Mount Morris?
Hi.
North Dansville?
Hi.
Nande?
Hi.
Ashen? Portage?
Hi.
Sparta?
Hi.
Springwater? Westferta?
Hi.
York. Eyes 50, 54, adopted. Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County, Cornell Cooperative Extension, Association of Livingston County, and Oryx, Harrington, and Suck Cliff LLC.
Mr. Chairman, move this resolution, and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Are there any concerns on this resolution? There are none, I will please yourself.
Evan?
Hi.
Hilotonia?
Hi.
Canisius? Geneseo?
Hi.
Groveland?
Hi.
Lester?
Hi.
Lima?
Hi.
Livonia? Mount Morris?
Hi.
North Dansville?
Hi.
Nande?
Hi.
Ashen? Portage?
Hi.
Sparta?
Hi.
Springwater? Westferta?
Hi.
York. Eyes 50, 54, adopted. Requesting the New York State Senate and the New York State Assembly to authorize Livingston County to impose an additional rate of sales and compensating use taxes.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution, and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Are there any concerns on this resolution? There are none, I will please yourself.
This is a two-thirds majority vote. Evan?
Hi.
Hilotonia?
Hi.
Canisius?
Hi.
Geneseo?
Hi.
Groveland?
Hi.
Lester?
Hi.
Lima?
Hi.
Livonia? Mount Morris?
Hi.
North Dansville?
Hi.
Nande?
Hi.
Ashen?
Hi.
Portage?
Hi.
Sparta?
Hi.
Springwater?
Hi.
Westferta?
Hi.
York.
Hi.
Eyes 3884, adopted. Requesting the New York State Senate and the New York State Assembly to authorize Livingston County to continue imposing an additional mortgage recording tax.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution, and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Are there any concerns on this resolution? There are none, I will please yourself.
This is also a two-thirds majority vote. Evan?
Hi.
Hilotonia?
Hi.
Canisius?
Hi.
Geneseo?
Hi.
Groveland?
Hi.
Lester?
Hi.
Lima?
Hi.
Livonia?
Right.
Mount Morris?
Hi.
North Dansville?
Hi.
Nande?
Hi.
Ashen?
Hi.
Portage?
Hi.
Sparta?
Hi.
Springwater?
Hi.
Westferta? Eyes 3884, adopted. Amending a portion of resolution number 2024-20, authorizing legal services with the law offices of Peter K. Skivington.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution, and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Are there any concerns on this resolution? There are none, I will please yourself.
Evan?
Hi.
Hilotonia?
Hi.
Canisius?
Hi.
Geneseo?
Hi.
Groveland?
Hi.
Lester?
Hi.
Lima?
Hi.
Livonia?
Right.
Mount Morris?
Hi.
North Dansville?
Hi.
Nande?
Hi.
Ashen?
Hi.
Portage?
Hi.
Springwater?
Hi.
Westferta?
Hi.